Hello, everybody.
Hey, Ken. Hey, everybody else.
Hello.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 8th meeting of Northfield Township Board of Trustees at 7:01 PM. Pause for the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening and to do the business of Northfield Township, we ask that you guide us in our decision-making and that the things we consider, what we put thought into and do what best. Amen.
Amen.
Next is pledge. One sec. And I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Ms. Manley, would you please call the roll?
Turn my volume up some here. Zelenak.
Northfield Township, President, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Chick.
Anna Chick, President, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Manley, President, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. Moko.
President, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Otto.
Jackie Otto, President, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Dignan.
President, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Nelson.
See that?
Nelson.
I saw him.
He's here.
Present. Present. Audio issues. I couldn't hear anyone. Present, Joshua Nelson, Northfield Township, Michigan.
All here.
Next, make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th, 2021 meeting, May 11th, 2021, and May 25th, 2021 meetings.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Nelson. Discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Yep. Dignan.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak.
Yes.
Chick. Yes. Nelson.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next is the consent agenda. Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Motion by, supported by Otto. Discussion.
I'd like to call a couple of reports out.
Certainly.
For me.
Do you like to pull them out, or did you want to call attention to them?
Either or.
Okay. Why don't we, if you're okay with it, why don't we talk about them here and then we'll make the vote? Is that okay?
That's fine with me.
Excellent. Which one, first, Ms. Zelenak?
So let's talk about the public safety. I would like to thank everybody that helped in the North Village repairs. Thank you very much. Much appreciated for all the effort. And then the community center, do we know when the flooring is going to take place? I know she has indicated June or July. Do you know anything about that, Mr. Dignan? Any holdups or what's taking so long?
Well, I know Tammy is working with them to get it done. It's a scheduling thing. You know, there's a variety of things that are going into it, but she is working on getting it scheduled as soon as she can. They were able to accommodate and get the right product that you wanted, so certainly.
And then the last, I don't know if Dan Willis is on the phone call.
He is.
So just a comment, in general, with the sewer basin construction, it seems like it's always, not always, but quite a bit last minute, oh my gosh, we have to pay this fee. It's going to stop construction. And I'm just not sure why, you know, we don't know the fee schedule.
Yeah, the problem with this is Green Oak is not as delayed telling us stuff till the last minute. We didn't know about the $45,000 tree mitigation thing until last week. We started this back in November, I think, getting permits and stuff, and it was never mentioned then, so.
On that note, Superstar St. Charles, I spoke to him. I had put a call in to him early on when we found that out, and unfortunately, he was on vacation. He said, had he been here, we would have been able to figure that out without what we had to go through. But, so he apologized for that. But, yeah, we're trying to get a better line of communication with them in general, so.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a large project, and I know this is the second time that it was like, you know, we had to hurry up and write checks and stuff like that as to not stop the project. Considering the size of the project, I would think there would be a pretty, you know, here's the fee schedule, this is what you need to pay, this is when you need to pay it by, and maybe even, you know, give them $100,000 in an escrow account, and just start taking the fees out of that until it's depleted and then go from there. Anyway, it's disconcerting at times, for sure. When you get a call and say, hey, we need to write a $45,000 check, or we need a security bond, and we need it now, and you're in trouble.
Mr. Willis, go ahead.
We do have a meeting with Green Oak tomorrow to get stuff started.
Okay.
Get all the permits screened out and with the engineers in Green Oak, so we'll be doing that tomorrow.
Okay, that's good to hear, Mr. Willis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Ms. Otto?
Yeah, I wanted to also thank Chief Wagner and Lieutenant Smith and Sergeant Powell for helping on the village park repairs as well. And also wanted to call attention to the Valley Ambulance Service. We are now up to 15 minutes and 83 seconds, and it seems like it's getting higher instead of lower.
They should be on the call to discuss that tonight. Ms. Zelenak, did you have another item you wanted to call attention to in the consent agenda?
That'll do it, Mr. Dignan. Thank you.
I do want to say that since we're talking about public safety, I want a big shout out to folks at the Public Safety Department, both the police and fire for making graduation for more like public school go off without a hitch. The logistical jumping around that they did was amazing. The parade was exciting. The kids loved it. The community members I talked to absolutely loved it, and, you know, it was really great to see. I know the kids loved the fact that they could have a graduation, and it wouldn't have been possible without the team that Mr. Wagner has in place, and just really appreciate that a lot. I know the school does as well. I'd pass that on from them, so. Ms. Chick?
Yep, I just wanted to add to that. I want to thank Chief Wagner and the Fire Department for going out and cleaning off the mural underneath the overpass. They did it very quickly with like one day's request, and it was very much appreciated. It saved a lot of people, a lot of scrubbing, so thank you.
We do appreciate the reports. I know that sometimes we read past them in consent agenda, but I do read through them. I know that my other board members do as well. So, you know, your time and putting that in is greatly appreciated. It does let us stay in contact with that. I don't have anything else. Mr. Wagner, did you have something to add?
No, not really. Just, I appreciate you guys recognizing, especially Detective Powell and Lieutenant Smith from the Fire Department for, he actually brought his tractor and equipment out there and rode a till that up. We did, we did throw a bunch of grass seed out there. I've been checking. It doesn't, it's coming back a little bit, and it will come back fine. But I was more worried about the ruts with people walking through there and breaking an ankle or something like that. But that's all fixed, and by the end of the summer, that will all be grass, I'm sure. So, and then, yeah, graduation, we, it might appear as though we have like 15 police cars, but we really don't. We only have four or five and we kind of jump frog, leapfrog from intersection to intersection to get the intersections closed. But, yeah, that, we, that's fun for us, too. You know, the kids enjoy it, and then it was a hot one out there at graduation, and about halfway through, we recognized that the crowd definitely needed water, so the school was able to provide us with a few, several cases of water that we were able to pass out through the crowd, and we only had to remove one person with, you know, heat issues, so that went well. So, we like to participate in that as well, so, thank you.
Yep, that water was compliments of App's Up Here Water Company. They're always helping out the township and school in any way they can, so. All right, with nothing else, let's call the roll on the consent agenda.
Chick.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Excellent. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Not? I'll make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Manley. Any discussion? Oh, yep, Ms. Zelenak, go ahead.
You added quite a few items between the time we received our packet and Thursday and, I guess, on Monday?
We did. They were mostly budget-related items because of the end of the fiscal year coming. That's why they, the way they did is, discussing with Ms. Starbuck. And then, then the other item we simply added was the discussion in regards to meeting in person.
And then the cabinets, correct?
That's a budget thing, too, yeah, because we have revenue for this fiscal year that we're not necessarily going to have for next fiscal year.
Okay. Yeah, it would be nice, too, if, when you add something. I know the cabinets have an item, and so does their resolution. Just the other one would be just good to know, so what direction you're leaning or want us to do on the open meetings or opening the meetings. That would just be good information to have down.
Yeah, sorry. I, really, it's a discussion. It's a discussion about the way to go with public, with in-person meetings. I, you know, but we, that's that when we get there, too. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I think it might be a good idea when we add these things at the last minute that we attach a memo or an explanation why it's being added. So, we didn't know if it's urgent or emergency or what was going on, so that would be, just a quick note would be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
We're trying to avoid doing this as much as we possibly can, so, all right. There are no other comments. Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Manley, yes. Otto.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Before we go to petitions and communications, I'll just make a note that item 600 new business, the file cabinets, I will be abstaining to your questions you have, but those were actually items that were procured by me, I guess I'll say, on accident from property disposition. So I own them, so I won't be voting on them, but if you have a question about what they are and stuff, I was going to sell them, and then Bert mentioned that the township, and we had, anyway, I just wanted to let the public know, and you guys know that I'll be abstaining from any deliberation on that or voting. All right, next item is petitions and communications from the public. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board on items that are being considered this evening, you're welcome to do so at this time. Simply raise your hand, and we will call on you. This time, I do not see the hands raised, so we will move on. Next item on the agenda is, there's no, there's no clarification. I don't know if anyone has any comments at this point. Okay, then we'll go on correspondence. So, you will, you did receive in your packet the additional resident comments that were received in the Chestnut Development after the deadline for the packet last time. Even though you received those, I believe, as they were coming in as well, we wanted to make sure that they were in the packet as we had promised. And then, the United Way 21-day Equity Challenge correspondence. With that, I'll make a motion to move on to the next, to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. Their support.
Support.
Worked by Chick. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Moko.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right. Welcome, Ms. Starbuck. How are you today? Great.
Hi, everyone. Sorry I'm late. My power went out at my house, so it was like a little bit of a scramble, but I just want to say, before we get started with any questions, that I did make a mistake when I was merging documents, and so you got two copies of the general fund budget. The first version is the one that we're looking at today, so there is, and there is that mistake in this document, which would be corrected before we vote on it, so we can't vote on it tonight. But that also is fine because the treasurer did send quite a few questions and things that we want to address, so those things will be in a finalized version at the next meeting.
Did you have? Right, being said, the public hearing is open. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board in regards to the budget, you may do so at this time by raising your hand, and we will call on you. Seeing no hands being raised at this time, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Work.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Chick, to close the public hearing. Any comments? No? Ms. Chick?
Yep, just real quickly, Eva, I mean, Ms. Starbuck, those changes that are requested by the treasurer or any other board member or anybody else, will those be highlighted, so we'll know what those changes are?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. One, one of the changes that I did want to bring up is the suggestion that we pay for the $60,000 parking lot paving out of the Barker Road Fund, the proceeds from the Barker Road Fund, instead of bringing that out of the general fund. So that's like a substantial change that I did want to bring up with the board before I make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
I just wanted to comment that whoever came up with that idea, that's a very good suggestion, because it's kind of what that money should be used for, so, just, just a kudos to whoever put that forward.
That would be Mrs. Zelenak, our wonderful treasurer, brought that up.
Well, thank you, Ms. Zelenak.
You're welcome.
It's very.
You're very grateful. We're very grateful for Ms. Zelenak's work and Ms. Starbuck's work.
I have a question, Mr. Dignan. I mean, do we want to board comments at the public hearing, or do we wait to the discussion of the fiscal, under old business?
When the board, we'll discuss it under old business.
Okay, already. Thank you.
Yes. All right. Any other comments, Ms. Manley? Will you call the roll?
Nelson.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dignan.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Excellent. Under old business, the first item is the discussion of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. And with that, Ms. Zelenak, would you like to lead us off, or?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. I did send Ms. Starbuck some comments. One, and I can just, I think the revenue for property taxes might be a little low, but it's only maybe $6,000. I think we're fine with that. I did make a comment, so hiring the manager, is that going to go in this year, or is that going to be in next year? For the MML.
At this point, it's going to end up, I believe, hitting next year, Ms. Starbuck, because the fiscal year will be over before we get a bill. We don't pay for that service until we hire someone.
Okay, that, yeah, that's definitely important clarification, because the invoice date is usually where the fiscal year lands, so I thought it was going to fall into this fiscal year. But if it's something that happens kind of at the end of the process, then I can make that adjustment.
Okay.
I mean, I've never been through a search for an executive, at least in a municipal realm. I mean, I know in the private sector, we don't pay until we hire.
Right, right.
I mean, that, that's pretty standard practice.
Probably need, probably clarification on that. I was unsure, and that's why I raised it. If it would hit this year, you know, are they going to invoice us, or will they invoice us after the hire?
Okay, I will confirm that.
Okay.
There, there should be a contract.
There is one, I think, in the packet, but I.
Yeah, the contract should stipulate the payments.
Yeah. We can reread that, so.
I know.
So the next one was under the general fund elections on page 16. Right now, I think we have, what, $15,000 for the election specialist? Is that going to be a permanent position, an entire year? Does that cover it? I guess that would be.
Ms. Zelenak, I did respond to that in the email. Originally, we did not expect to make a hire this soon. That's why the $15,000 number was in there. Now that we do have April on board, that will need to be adjusted. Oh, I will, I am planning to make that adjustment.
Okay, thank you. And then I think computer services, and I might be looking at the wrong, I might be looking at the old budget. I had it on page 17, was, it looked low, and I think you responded as well. It looked like it seemed pretty low. Like $10,000 low.
Yeah, I did comment that I'm happy to take a look at those numbers. It looks like, yeah, those, those numbers can be, and I, yeah, so you were correct. It does look low to me, so I'll review those numbers.
All right. And then the only comment I had, and road improvements, and I reached out to Mr. Wagner on that, was had we determined which ones were going to happen, and Mr. Wagner responded. I don't know if he wants to tell everybody what was decided between the road commission and we gave him the authority to work on the roads, so.
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, so, at whatever last meeting that we talked about roads, I kind of gave a general overview of what we were looking at. So we kind of made a priority of the intersection at Seven Mile and Dollar Road, so they are going to grind that out, they're going to raise that up, and hopefully that will take care of that problem. The second priority we were looking at will be, and, you know, we didn't have obviously enough money to do everything we wanted to do, so we took the Jennings Road from the end of the pavement by Dr. Griffith's vet there, and then we're going to do as much of that to Kearney Road as we possibly can this year. And then there was also a little bit left over, and we were going to hit some spots on Six Mile, kind of in the area of the golf course there. And then, other than that, I mean, the normal, you know, grading and dust control that the board had voted on, and then there will be a little bit left over in ditching, which will be, I'll get with Mike Masti, and we'll determine where we're going to utilize that, those funds at.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Ms. Zelenak.
And so the next one is, Ms. Starbuck has already brought up, is, I would suggest that we move the potential repaving of 75 Barker into the 75 Barker Fund. And then in addition, and I don't think this has to be right now, but break out maybe the other professional, put that for legal, and then break out utilities like the sewer bill, electrical, and put that, but I think maybe the $10,000 might be appropriate for the total cost, but that was my thought on 75 Barker. So, there we go. And then, the building department, as far as the allocation, I was wondering if the allocation was correct now that we have a full-time front desk person. I wasn't sure if that was reflected in the building department. I couldn't tell if it was under the old, when we had a part-time person, or if the number was reflected for the full-time, because it looked about the same as the last budget.
Ms. Starbuck, was that an adjustment made when we brought the full-time person on?
So, no, that, I did, I did miss that allocation, and I did email that to you, Ms. Zelenak, so that's another adjustment that I can make.
All right. And then the next one is, I think we need to look at our fee structure, Mr. Dignan, for our next meeting, because using McKenna to do the inspections, they charge about, they charge, I think, $85 an hour, and then in the past, I think our old building inspector was between $50 and $60, depending on what he was doing, so I think we might want to raise that fee structure, because the building department is already struggling, they're keep going into their fund balance on a, on a yearly basis, so I would, I'd like to request that the fee structure be put to the, on the next budget, so we could talk about that and increase the fee, as long as we're using McKenna at this time. And that, that covers pretty much what I had raised, and I had talked to Mr. Wagner about items that I had for the police and Mr. Willis on the wastewater treatment plant, and no changes there.
There are two items that you had mentioned in regards to software or computer services. I believe, looked at as we had, that a larger amount of services in getting everybody remotes set up and all of that, and
Okay.
when we looked at the previous year, even though there was some of that done in the previous year, too, that I, I thought we had felt comfortable at the $10,000.
Okay, that's fine. It can stay. It's a small amount. We can catch it later, if need be.
All right, and then, yeah, that's the one I had. Ms. Chick was next, and then Ms. Otto.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Otto?
Yeah, so to answer the question in regards to the executive search, the quote that was provided was guaranteed for 90 days. Invoices for the league services. the quote that was provided was guaranteed for ninety days. Invoices for the league services shall be submitted in two installments, one at the halfway point and one upon completion. Invoices shall be payable within thirty days. So this would go into the new year.
Next year, no.
And then I did have another question. We have in the capital outlay, computers have been budgeted for $2,000 for upgrades to township staff computers. Is that software? What type of upgrades are we doing for $2,000?
Those are desktop computers for staff.
But $2,000 seems to be awfully cheap.
Sounds like. Sounds like.
No, they're about six fifty. They're not buying new monitors. They're they're just buying desktop computers.
No, but she's only putting $2,000 in there.
We're not replacing everybody's at once.
Okay.
We should be doing a third, a third, a third. We should be replacing a third this year and a third the following year.
So how many are we replacing? I still think $2,000 is too small.
I don't know. I have no idea. We have no current state analysis of our technology, on any of our technology in the building. We have no current.
I pay for them.
Well, I know what I pay for them. I wouldn't, I mean, it's.
So so let me ask this. Who put the $2,000 in there?
I believe that was a carryover.
It was a carryover? Okay. All right. I I really, I'm not going to object to it, but I really feel that we're going to have to do some capital improvements.
What's our capital improvement plan say? I guess that's the question.
I'm not so sure that he addressed it as as such.
Ah, okay.
Okay, so we'd have to look at it.
Yeah, I don't recall, and it's it's been a while.
I mean, but but again, you know, the technology is obsoleted about every thirty-six months.
Right, and I'm not questioning to do it. I'm questioning that it's too low.
I agree. I agree.
I think that's.
You get a desktop these days costs anywhere between seven to eight hundred dollars. I mean, get a.
Government, you can get it between five and eight hundred. Yeah.
Six to eight.
Yeah, yeah, you can.
I mean, you're only talking, you're only talking, you're not even talking three, you're talking two that you can get for $2,000.
Right, two, two to three, but we don't have, I mean, that's that, Ms. Wagner, correct me if I'm wrong, that doesn't include anything in the police side.
No, no, it's just the office side.
We're talking.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, possibly eight.
So two, two to three a year. I mean.
Two to three a year.
Two to three a year is, it's about right. And and, you know, we really should get, is it Kelly? Is that who it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should really get.
But does that also include him doing everything on that computer?
That should be a.
Installs and everything?
That should be a computer that's ready to be in.
I still found that to be too low, but okay.
Before our next, before we finalize, and I will get with Kelly and get a current state, because he should have some idea where we are, where we stand with all of our technology needs in that area, because, you know, I, Ms. Starbucks, yes?
I I just wanted to suggest on items like this, in the grand scheme of our entire budget, it's not a lot of money if we have to go up another thousand dollars. So maybe just proposing an amendment once we get the contract or the the invoice, these estimates are just based off of rough numbers. And also, I believe that we've already done two or three replacements in the last couple of years. So I do think that the the number of two, it was for two replacements this year, if I remember correctly.
And I believe some of his hour in his contract account for doing some of the work that he does, so it would be, you know.
Well, then a thousand dollars apiece for two is is appropriate.
Yeah, but we'll confirm it with him. That's for sure. All right. Any, Ms. Otto, any other questions in regard?
No, that was it.
Okay. Ms. Manley? Anything? No, okay. Mr. Moko? Yes, make right ahead your.
Yep, sorry, unmuted. My only question is, is looking at membership dues. I don't know what SEMCOG does besides send emails occasionally. Why remember that if we feel obliged to be a member or or what? If anybody can explain that to me, I would, I would appreciate it.
Well, Ms. Otto, did you want to take that or?
I can kind of touch base on that. SEMCOG is a regional organization that we have opportunities to get grants from. And their grant funding is not only on a regional basis, but it is through federal and state funding, and it is outside of what you would call DNR grants or any other type of state grants. Your community block grants come from SEMCOG. There is, there are sidewalk grants that come from SEMCOG. So when we weren't in it, we weren't getting updates on it, and we weren't being informed of them. Now we get informed on them.
Have have we ever had a sidewalk board?
Yes.
Okay, good enough for me. That's all I, that's all I want to know.
The sidewalk on Main Street between the township and elementary school building side, that sidewalk was all done by community block grant, plus the crossing in front of the element, the middle school.
Okay, good. And and, yes, Mr. Nelson?
Um, I just honestly had a question. By looking at this, it's very minute, but I've been looking through this. Why, why was this upkeep on the street lights so high? I I was just kind of curious because I don't, I I just haven't really considered the maintenance that we put into those things. Um, anyone can answer that? I I, from my understanding, I just haven't seen as many streetlights, so.
All the lights on Main Street, essentially. I think there's like.
We have probably over twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
If they just replaced everything, then that would explain it to me.
And it's and it's not where we have to go out and look for somebody to do it. We're told this is the cost to do it from DTE.
Yep, I I I get that much. I didn't realize we just replaced everything.
Yeah.
That that would explain it. Thank you.
And I could be wrong at the twenty-seven.
That would.
Wagner would know.
There's gas lights out there still on Main. I think there's two or three, but most of them switched over to LED, right, though? I'm sorry, chief.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, they they have just gone through recently and changed everything over to LED. And gosh, I did know the number of lights. I feel like it's more than twenty-seven.
Like fifty?
I was thinking closer to fifty.
After I said twenty-seven, I thought it could be even fifth over fifty.
So when there's an issue with a, any of the lights, they call in and we make a report. I used to do it. Jennifer does it now. And we send that off to DTE, and usually within a week or so, you'll see them out there making the repair of the street lights, so. Yeah, and I don't know, but I don't know if, and I didn't look at that budget number. I don't know if that has anything to do with the the roundabout lighting, or if that's just completely separate or different, because there's quite a few lights in those roundabouts, so.
Ms. Starbucks, is that in there or is that separate? Because I I know that.
I'm not sure what is included, but I do know that the amount that we pay will go down over the next couple of years by transitioning to LED lights. So we maintain the budget at about thirty thousand for this year, but I would expect it to come down by a couple thousand. So.
That's our electricity consumption. Correct? Yeah, that's our consumption, I believe.
I just was unaware of how many lights we had and then then replacing, so that that makes a lot more sense. It was just a high number, and I was like, I just didn't realize where that cost was coming from. That's all.
Excellent. All right. Mr. Moko, did you have anything else? And then we'll go to Ms. Zelenok. No, good? All right, Ms. Zelenok?
I was just going to make some comments on the streetlights. I do believe there's 4,000 allocated to the Eight Mile Bridge in our streetlight that we get charged for, the lights on the Eight Mile Bridge. In addition to that, the seniors or the community center lights, that I we did a contract where they put up the poles, and we have a maintenance, yearly maintenance fee on that. And I I think that was seventeen hundred. I'd have to look how much that is per year as well. So I don't recall the amount, but we contracted with them to put up the lights. They're their lights, and they will maintain them, but we do have, in addition to the electricity, we have a kind of like a maintenance fee that's built into the cost of that. I don't recall the number offhand.
But we did pay for the lights up front and to make that a lot less, right? Because otherwise it was a much larger number perpetuity forever.
Yes, it was a perpetuity forever. So we did, like you said, Mr. Dignan, we did pay for the poles up front. I think that was twenty-five thousand. I'm not sure, between that and twenty-seven thousand, but then we do have the maintenance and the electricity and going along with them, putting up the poles. And I don't recall what the number is, but I think it's at least 2,000. It might be more.
So if someone knocks a pole down, or one starts rust out, or, I mean, it could be fifteen years from now, it doesn't matter, DTE comes in and replaces it. They just do. That's, you know, their their lighting program and projects can be really good. You just have to look at them and make sure we make the right decisions on where you're evaluating that. All right, any other budget questions? Yes, Mr. Moko?
I just want to throw out there that the community center lighting is in the community center budget. That wouldn't be under street lighting.
All right, thanks. Yeah, if it did, I must, I might have missed that. Thank you, Mr. Moko.
That's it. I'm done.
Again, I just want to say, you know, at this time of year, I mean, we are ever more appreciative of the hard work of Ms. Starbucks and Ms. Zelenok. It's a very thankless task. People say, oh, Ms. Zelenok collects our taxes. Well, Mrs. Zelenok watches our books and is a tremendous asset to the community, and I greatly appreciate all of her hard work. And I know, I know all the board members do, but it it definitely comes to light in times like this when we're facing the budget and getting ready for a new fiscal year. So thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
All right, we're not taking action on this till next, correct, Ms. Starbucks? That's right, okay. All right. And and that would be Resolution 21644, right, for?
General Appropriation Act.
Yeah, all right. On that resolution, is that going to be updated? Because the dates are wrong in it.
Yes.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
Action on that.
And today wasn't June ninth either, so.
That, you were Jennifer on that. What happened there? All right. HVA update.
If you could go back to that, the resolution.
Yes.
In going through the expenses, I do not see the wastewater treatment construction fund as an expense on page five.
Yeah, I'm going to look at that document, because I don't, I think there's more issues with that.
Well, as far as the numbers, the numbers all tied except, and obviously they're going to change slightly from what I what I reviewed, but I did not see the wastewater treatment construction fund in page five under the expenses.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so that's like the $3,746. I think that needs to be.
All right, HVA update. Mr. Wagner, who should I bring on as a panelist?
Paul Hood is in the participants' room there.
Mr. Hood, I have promoted you to panelist. Ask you on, there you are. How are you today?
Very good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just wanted to give you guys a quick update on what's going on. I'm not going to try to take up too much of your time. We have been working with with Chief Wagner. We've also brought Dr. Robert Bellmeyer into the process because he's kind of the the person in charge of the whole process here within the county for emergency medical services. So we have a written performance improvement plan that we're going to present to you guys. Should be ready by next week. I will send it to Chief Wagner, along with the recent response times, although the response times look like they went down for the first quarter of this year. Since we've made some stopgap changes here, the month of May, we went up in from the fifty percentile of on time performance up into eighty percentile for on-time performance, with just making some slight modifications to moving a unit to a US 23 in Plymouth Road, which gave us a pretty good run towards the township. We are working with your 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 neighbors there. Chief Wagner knows who I'm talking about. I'm sure that he's talked to Chief Smith, so we're trying to get that all underway. Just so you guys know, Webster Township is about to move into their new building, and we're asking if we can co-occupy there with our Dexter Echo Unit, which would put us four miles from Dexter and four and a half miles from Northfield Township on a twenty-four-hour day basis. That'd make our response times much, much better. So that's one of the options that we've started to work on. Chief Smith said it is going to take him a little bit of time to be able to get all this done because he's got to get it through both Webster Township and Dexter Township. So he said the fall would probably be the best amount of time that he would be able to do it. However, we're still planning on making sure that we use as many of the stopgaps that we can do to to get resources closer to Northfield Township so that we can meet 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 the response times on a on a more regular basis and and not just fifty percent. So we are working hard at it. We are taking it very, very seriously. We are probably going to have, we're going to ask Dr. Bellmeyer to sit in one of the meetings with us as well and address the the township trustees and supervisor. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
Okay. Do board members have any questions for Mr. Hood? Mr. Moko?
Yeah, your, the response times went down a little bit. Is that due to the lack of staffing or extra calls or or what? What's a, just what's the reasoning?
Yeah, you know, the the response times that you have currently in your hand, those were the the wintertime response times, and it's it's the combination of weather for distance traveled. Yes, we are having some some staffing problems, just like everybody else in Michigan is right now. It's very difficult to get people to to want to come to work right now, so we're down about eighteen percent from open person, open full-time positions, so we're working hard to get that. We've hired a new recruiter who's starting to work the school systems and stuff to get people interested in EMS, and we're also putting on additional EMT and paramedic classes that are starting this summer and going through next fall. So we're we're working real hard and, you know, in fact, if you start with us, one of the programs that we just released was if you start with us driving a wheelchair van, we'll pay for your EMT education and your paramedic education with no, no monies out of pocket so that you can move up within the organization quickly.
Thanks, Mr. Hood. Thank you very much.
Yes. Ms. Otto?
Yes, so you said the report that we had was for the winter months. Where, did you say we were at now?
I could, I can send the, I just did May's months, the month of May had them sent to me, so I'll attach them with the adopt, the performance improvement plan to Chief Wagner, and you'll have them in hand by next week.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wagner?
Oh, I'd just like to thank Paul for coming on and addressing. And I know they, I know staffing is an issue not just with EMS, but fire and police and not just in Washington County, not just in Michigan, but it's all over. It's a huge issue. So but we, yeah, want to continue to work with them to try to improve these times. And, you know, if we can get that the community paramedic into the township, which we are seeing more often, and the Echo Unit from Dexter moved over to Webster, that that will really, really help. So I appreciate them acknowledging the issue and that they're working on fixing it.
Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Hood, I do appreciate you understanding the magnitude that this is for us. It's a very high priority. And, you know, we just want to make sure things are equitable and that we're able to get the services that our residents certainly deserve. So thank you for coming and updating us. We look forward to the written communication, the written plan. So.
Yep, should have it in hand by next week. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being patient with me.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Moving on is the updated COVID policy. See, that's in your packet. I do have a concern with an item. Jennifer had gotten this from our labor attorney and the second to last sentence in our memo talks about as to office cleaning. Right now Stacy did leave it in there that states that it would still take place, which I, you know, that's fine. I think it should, a general practice. But that it's no longer required. And I guess my question is, is should we have something in our policy that's no longer that's not consistent with the act? And I'm going to go to Mr. Wagner with that question.
Yes, thanks, Ken. So I worked on this with Stacy. And basically I took the last one that the board had approved. I thought she had created that. I thought that's what Mr. Ains had told me. So she took that and I asked her to bring it to current status and standard and then try to make it massagable so that we don't have to keep bringing this plan back every time the state makes a change or the CDC makes a change. So, and I think she's done that. But as far as the, I think you're speaking of that the offices will be cleaned every Monday or something like that. Is that the part?
Yeah, could you direct us to that page, Mr. Dignan?
Nope, it is.
Because there is about the cleaning in general. I think there's that item six or is that before that?
No, 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 it's, I'm getting there.
And I would also say that we knew that, we knew that the board may want to make adjustments to this because we couldn't quite predict exactly how the board felt about this. So I just kind of directed Stacy, get something out there. If the board wants to make changes to it, then they'll approve it with the changes that they want to make to it. So.
It's on page six, item B.
Yep.
Yeah.
How about we just say like, I also talked to Stacy. I had some issues with some of the items and she put in an update that you could just say the township hall and public safety building shall be cleaned two times per week.
Yeah, and that's what's already being done anyhow.
Right, right.
I mean, I guess I am more in line, it would be cleaned in accordance with, you know, the requirement, at least in accordance with the requirements of the state act, you know, and if we do it more often, that's, that's great. And I think that's wonderful. I just have a real problem putting a very specific thing to that extent that, you know, like, like every single Monday this will happen.
Okay, yeah.
You know, versus.
It talks about deep cleaning and normally deep cleaning is what they call the COVID deep cleaning is almost a disinfected cleaning. It's totally different than when they come in to clean the office.
So where do you see the deep cleaning, Ms. Otto?
It's on B.
Just as a deep cleaning.
On B.
Yeah, yeah. So again, her recommendation is we just change it to how we clean the office, which is the township hall and public safety shall be cleaned two times to week, per week. That's what we do now. We do it Wednesday and Saturday. And I don't know what the in accordance to the state act is. I don't know what the state act requires.
Well, to me, I don't even know if that's an act. I think it's just the executive order.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what the executive order, so.
Yeah, neither do I.
She indicated that, you know, we do it twice a week. That should be good enough.
Yeah, it is a public, it's a public act two thirty-eight, I thought, that was adopted by later. Yeah, go ahead, Nate, Mr. Moko?
Yeah, we have to follow what MyOSHA says. And as far as July first comes, everything's open. We're back in person. And going and making, you know, adopting all this stuff, that's fine. We have four choices according to MyOSHA on their latest guidance. You can require masks for everybody. Everybody's allowed to come back June first, right now, as far as come back to the office. So you can come back with masks required is option one. Everybody gets them. Option two, you can have somebody ask, you need to see proof of your vaccination card. If you have proof, you don't have to wear a mask. Otherwise, if you don't have a vaccine, you got to wear a mask. Or the option three, if you're vaccinated, come into the office or no vaccination, stay home. Option four, which is what every other Target, Kroger, Walmart, Costco, put a sign on the door that says if you're vaccinated, come on in. Go by the honor system. And as far as I'm concerned, this, we shouldn't spend a ton of time on this. We should put a sign on the door and we should be in person at the next meeting, in my opinion. That's it. I mean, I go through the same thing. I work for a publicly traded company that comes out with guidance every single week, but it's all superseded by MyOSHA. And so I, every week I got to look at what MyOSHA comes out with. And then this is going by Governor Whit, Governor Whit, Governor Whitmer's guidance. I mean, it's public. People, if you look at MLive, they got articles on it every single day strictly off MyOSHA, or you can go on the MyOSHA website. There's links to it on MDHHS. That's just my opinion. It's time to get back. As far as deep cleaning, if MyOSHA doesn't require a deep clean, then we don't do a deep clean unless people want to do it, you know, but you know, everybody needs to come back, come on back in, you know, unless you're vaccinated, unless you're you're not vaccinated, put a mask on and come July first, everybody's back to normal. But that's, that's my, my opinion. And the facts from MyOSHA. So my opinion plus MyOSHA's guidance.
Thanks, Nate. Now, Mr. Wagner, this is, did she indicate that, that we had to update our policy and that we had to remain, had to have a COVID policy in place still?
Yeah, I believe, I believe MyOSHA still requires a policy in place. But where I'm trying to find where she tried to make it in the first or second paragraph so that as the MyOSHA changes, we adopt that by reference to this policy instead of continuing to adopt this policy every time.
Yeah, and then we should have a business continuity plan for the office that doesn't include infectious disease type things. So, you know, it's like an overall approach to how you do things instead of being more specific.
So do we want to make a change to page one thirty-four, or I'm sorry, so page one thirty-four of the packet to just say we will clean twice a week?
Yeah.
And, all right, then I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the amended
Go ahead, you can make it. There's a couple other changes.
Okay. I can wait.
Okay, so, I mean, if you go to A, it says all janitorial employees or service provider will check in daily with the public safety department. I don't know about, you know, our janitorial, I don't, they don't work daily.
You do a self-check. If you, if you do a self-check, if you, if you don't have a temperature, you don't have a fever, you don't have diarrhea, come in.
What they could mean is daily that they're there. Every day that they are there.
Okay, okay. This is cleaning protocol.
All right. So as long as everybody's okay with that. And then I think Mr. Moko raised a good point. What is our policy? Vaccinated, you wear a mask. Unvaccinated or vaccinated, you don't wear a mask. Vaccinated or unvaccinated, you wear a mask and is it going to be on the honor system?
I think it needs to be on the honor system. I don't think you can ever, ever, I don't think you have a right to ask somebody if they're vaccinated or not.
According to CDC, you don't have the right to ask.
What if we just say that you have to wear it all the time, no matter what?
No, I agree. I did agree with that wholeheartedly.
No, and as far as the vaccine cards, they can be faked. So they're kind of useless. So on their system, yeah.
Okay, on their system. All right. Then if you go to page three, I don't know, under two, A, and I'm not sure which one it is, gloves will be provided for using when opening mail, counting currency. I mean, I guess they can be provided. Employees shall wear gloves. We don't do that. So I don't think we should have that in there. That should be eliminated.
You don't do it now?
Nope, we don't do it.
Change it to may wear gloves.
Yeah, but it's because, but at the end, employees shall wear gloves when performing these tasks.
Just put it to May.
May.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I would just say eliminate it. We don't do it, but May's fine. There's another one about shared services. So you go to page two, the last paragraph about shared equipments, equipment. Employees are prohibited from sharing water sources, food and other shared eating equipment at the township facilities. Obviously, we share the microwave and the refrigerator. So I just say we eliminate, you know, that. Employees are prohibited from using shared water sources, food and others, shared eating equipment at the township facility. Because we, we don't do that. We share the microwave, we share the refrigerator.
Are you suggesting eliminating that whole paragraph?
Nope, just suggesting eliminating the portion that indicates employees are prohibited from using shared water sources, food and other shared eating equipment at the township facilities, I think, which is the first sentence.
So it says employees are prohibited from gathering at any site within the township facilities, including kitchen facilities and bathrooms.
Well, they don't gather. I mean, they do go in one by one, you know, like people don't hang around there. But they do use the microwave. They do use the microwave. They do use the refrigerator and that's a shared thing. I would just say eliminate that part. And I think that covers it as long as, you know, we're okay that everybody's on the honor system.
Yeah, because I know, I'm fine with eliminating that first one.
Yep. So anyway, those are mine. And then we keep everything else the same about basically the honor system. And then we'll change employees may wear gloves because we don't and haven't. So I think that does it. And then we're going to change the township halls clean twice a week. Those are, those are my comments.
So if everybody's okay and if you approve this with the amendments that Lenore has suggested, I'll take these and get with Stacy tomorrow and make sure she's good with those changes. And I think she will be. So and then I don't feel like we have to bring it back. I think we can take what you have created here and then give it, get it out to the staff.
And I did talk to Stacy on, you know, some of these items, you know, about the, you know, twice a week on cleaning because that's how we do it, about not wearing gloves. And I talked to her about the shared facilities and you can double check with her, Chief, but she seemed to be okay with that.
Yeah, the only, the only one I, because I really don't know about the shared services, I can't remember ever reading anything on that. So.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
And I think, I think, I think I'll have her put, this is based on the honor system someplace in this as well.
That's what I was going to ask, is where are you going to put it? Because we do in here where it talks about unvaccinated employees and stuff. So.
Yeah, it's throughout the whole paragraph.
And to Mr. Moko's point, we probably should put, I don't remember seeing anything about putting signs up. So we probably should make sure we get those signs changed and put up. So.
As far as, as far as I know, I was talking with my safety department at my company, it's as long as that sign is posted at your public entrances where it says, you know, if you're unvaccinated, unvaccinated masks are required. You're covered, you're not invited. And we, like you said, we have to have, you have to have the COVID plan, which we got right here. So we're not, so we're covered under MyOSHA. And that's, that's, to me, as long as you're covered that way, you're good to go.
Agreed.
So Bill, on bullet four under A, where they start with personal protective equipment, you could put it in there.
Okay.
Because you're talking about unvaccinated employees and fully vaccinated employees.
And you're speaking of the honor system in there.
The honor system, yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Thanks, Chief.
Ready. Thanks. Thanks, Dignan.
Yeah, do, shall we make a motion on this or should we wait to have it come back? I think we should just make a motion. Get this on it. I'm going to make a motion, adopt the revised COVID nineteen policy with the amendments or with the changes discussed.
And I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Otto. Mr. Moko, do you have a question?
Yes, and I didn't know the right time to ask it. But can I make a motion that come July first, when the governor's guidance comes, we're back in business and meeting in person and we can throw Zoom out the window?
Item seven on our new business.
Ah, I only go up to five. I printed the early version. My apologies.
That's okay.
All right. I retract that.
There's a motion on the table with support. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Manley, will you follow up, please?
Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
That's a seven zero.
All right. Excellent. Next item on the agenda is the request from Ms. Carlisle to go live with the new township updated website. Mr. Nelson?
I make a motion to go live with the updated township website.
All support.
Mr. Nelson motioned, Ms. Chick supported. I think we all jumped to support. But all right, is there any discussion?
Thank you, Jennifer.
I wanted to say it looks really good. I know for the participants of the audience, you will be very pleased. So.
Yes, definitely. Document management should be much better. Just, just in general, the experience should be much better for for everybody. The documents on demand is huge. Just all of it. It's been a long time coming. I'm excited that we're going to actually get a business directory up there and things of that sort. Time, you know, and we can turn things on and off if we're not going to use them rather than just leaving them blank up there. So all right, then with no further discussion, Manley, will you follow the roll?
Manley, yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is the proposal from the Michigan Municipal League in regards to the township manager search. In discussions with them, at first there was concern that they were not going to be able to have staff necessary to facilitate a search. After some discussion back and forth, they came back and said, yes, we do have staff that can handle it. So that's for you, Mr. Nelson?
I just wanted to ask, regarding. I, I just wanted to ask regarding the, I think it's an extra. I don't have the entire document up in front of me. The extra $2,000 for, or it might be, might be more significantly more for doing.
It was $2,000.
It was $2,000? Okay. My memory did serve me well. For doing extra meetings with the township in order to present good candidates. To me, that sounded like a really good idea. I was hoping a motion could potentially include that. If we're going to spend the money, I would like this done properly and to involve us as much as possible. Just wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Ms. Manley?
That always be added later if we need it, if we feel that we need it? Or does that something that we have to do upfront? Do you know?
From what I understood, the quote, the, the quote had a deadline or something like that. And so.
Ninety days.
Yeah, that's for protected costs and such. Yeah, you have a 90-day window. Michigan Municipal League is always going to be willing to take more money from you. So, I mean, we, we can add on services. I, I don't believe those service costs are going to go up. But, I mean, they always could. That's the thing is if you don't add the service on, they certainly could go up. I, I did hear from several sources that the candidate pool is not, not very broad. There's not a great deal of candidates out there. But, you know, you never know when they put it out there and, you know. We'll see. Ms. Chick, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah. If I recall, we motioned for $14,000 or, and this is saying $17,000. Is that correct? We motioned for 14 initially?
We did.
Okay. So we need to change that. And I would be okay with the second profiling session if we could add it later. And my other, my third comment is I think that the pool of candidates might increase as people start going back to work to looking for jobs. So you never know.
Hope they do.
Yeah.
And that, yeah, with the, with the new child money that just got added. Ms. Otto?
So with this agreement, it looks like that we're only given one interview. And that is that. So they will come up with the questions. They will help with the formatting and everything. But there's only one interview that is done. Now, is that interview done by them or is that interview done?
Done by us.
Okay.
We did not pay them for those services.
Okay.
I can pull up the original hand just a second.
Because they did even say in here, services performed that extend beyond the scope of this proposal, including additional visits with the facilitator will be billed at $75 an hour plus the actual plus related expenses. So I didn't know if, you know. I would ask if, if that $2,000 could be added on later, but I think it is valuable. It would be valuable to have a, a second interview.
Three. It's the second. Looking to see if I've got that.
I know the searches that I participated in, I've never been in, in an interview where it was always one and done. I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, I. Yes. The, the prices from when we initially talked to them till now, they, where they went up to 17 for members. That is the executive search overview. They had an enhanced service that starts at 19. And then the enhanced service is up to fifth, up to five, personal visits with the search facilitator, community roundtables during the profiling process and open house during interview process. So.
I really like that kind of transparency, to be quite honest. I'd be willing to go all the way right now.
The 14,000 was their much, they, they considered it their less complex, basic search. So the three personal visits instead of the five or four. You know, they're going to do a community profile and recruitment brochure, basic standard marketing advertising, pre-screening of viable applicants, let's see, and develop a customized interview questions and the candidate selection format and process. And then they do a background check. So, you know, 14, 17 and 19 were the, the levels.
I'm good with 17.
So at, at the 17, you go up to four personal visits with the facilitator, engagement with the elected officials, department head, staff, profiling process to facilitate consensus building around the necessary skills, knowledge, attributes and team leadership expectations. An extensive community profile with the recruitment brochure, advanced marketing, including customized online targeting. Let's see, direct recruitment of passive candidates that may not necessarily be actively looking. They do pre-screening of viable applicants and reference checks as well, which is nice. That wasn't in the other. And they develop a customized interview questions as they did before and assist with a conditional offer of employment, background checks and contract negotiations. Obviously, that would be them and Stacy working together. But. So Ms. Chick, did you want to offer that up as a motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion to go with the executive search proposal for, through Michigan Municipal League at a fixed price of 17,000 for the standard executive search services outlined within the proposal.
I'll support.
There's a motion by Chick, support by Otto. Discussion? Ms. Zelenak?
I'll be voting no. If you can't hire someone, I don't see how you're going to manage them or give them performance reviews. And that's the key. And the price that you hire someone at will dictate the quality of the candidate you get. That's my comment.
Any other comments? There are none. Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Yep. Nelson?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Zelenak?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Passes six, one.
Thank you. Next item is seven, update on 75 Barker Road purchase agreement. We met with Mr. Fink and went over the purchase agreement today, actually, and outlined some of the necessary items. There is some update on some of the things on 75 Barker that we believe we have found out. I'm working with Allison Allen from A3 Environmental to facilitate the mitigation of the phase two environmental. They're trying to get crews scheduled. So as soon as we know that, we'll, we'll get on that. Secondly, I spoke to an individual in our community that's, that's fairly well aware. And I have Keller well drilling coming out to look. But it looks like the well that's in the back of the property is actually an abandoned well. It was a well that was put in to, to serve the police department when the building was back there. And that well that is actually being used is the well up by the building, the one that has the parking bollards around it. So we need to figure that out and exactly what's going to happen and whether that is, will be an easement that's granted for the building or it's stuff we're, we're trying to navigate through. But that, that is proceeding forward. We should be able to nail down the price on what the lot split's going to actually cost us. But that's where we're at. If anyone has any questions about it, you know, we do know that the things that we as a committee have looked at are stipulations on timeframe. So, you know, he'll have his due diligence period. He's going to have a set period to get a site plan application in. He's going to have a set period of time to get an approval for that site plan and a set period of time in which to commence construction. You know, tho, those are all things that we're working with Mr. Fink on to put in to a draft development agreement for the board to look at and consider. So, Ms. Chick?
So is there a target date that Chef Jay is looking at to start working on the building?
Well. Yeah. Well, we have to get the purchase agreement signed.
Right.
And we hope to be able to have that, let's just say, July 1, we get the purchase agreement signed. He has 120 days to do all of his due diligence. And I, and I'm certain that they've gotten to work on some of that. They've certainly been doing some of that work. But once we have that signed, he has that 120 days to, to do his due diligence and decide whether or not it is something feasible doing. We're, we're probably looking, he probably won't start working much before the end of the year.
Okay.
This reality with timeframes and stuff, because, you know, once, once, once he executes everything and it, and it's sold, the sold deal, I think we were looking at six months, six month and six month kind of targets.
Okay.
Where, you know, six months to apply for site plans, six more months before, you know, he had to have site plan approval by then. Must commence construction six months after getting final site plan approval, you know.
The community seems really excited about having them come in. And I think we're all a little anxious.
We are, we are. These things take time and a lot of money. So.
Yeah.
But, but that's where we're at. I don't have anything else to add on 75. I don't know if Mr. Moko or Ms. Zelenak has anything else to add.
Well, like Janet said, everybody's excited. We're trying to move it along as fast as possible. We're trying to keep the timeframe as condensed as possible. We've got everything working at once right now. Getting the site split. I mean, Ken mentioned it, mentioned it all. And unfortunately, things, as much as I'd love to see him out there tomorrow, you know, knocking out walls and painting it. You, you, we all, you know, it's just a fact of life. It takes, things don't happen overnight, but as long as we keep them moving forward, we're, we're in good shape.
That's for sure.
I did speak to Chef Jay today. He did call. So he, he is excited. He is, he's wanting to move forward, wants to get progress going. So as, as soon as we can, we, we will have a purchase agreement that can be forwarded to him for consideration. So he sent us a draft and we're working through legal with it.
Thank you.
Yep, certainly. Anybody else? All right, moving on. Next is update on independent contractor agreement for Recording Secretary, Ms. Wimmel.
Yeah. So I wanted to give everybody an update that we were able to complete the agreement with Lisa. We added one area. Stacy updated some language to include workers' top insurance language provision that it was not required. And we used the MML form to, to use as part of the attachment, which shows that she is a sole proprietor without employees. Oh, it, it, it worked very well together and Lisa signed it. And we now have an independent, one independent contractor agreement finalized.
Excellent.
And this was just an update. There was no motion to be made on that one since one was already made.
All right. Is there any movement on, oh, Ms. Eleanor, go ahead.
So refresh my memory, who signed it on behalf of the township?
I think Kathy and Ken were to sign it. Ken is the supervisor. He has the responsibilities to sign contracts and so does Kathy.
So have you signed it, Ken or Ms. or Mr. Dignan and Ms. Manley?
I have not seen it yet. I believe I got a message today that there's something in my box to sign, but it was after I had already left the township. I don't know if I have that yet.
I think that's something else.
Is it something else? Okay.
Yeah, these weren't, it didn't come back to you as electronic signature. It may have come back as just her signature. And then you guys were to sign it.
Great. I'll, I'll check on it tomorrow and sign it and have it for you, Kathy. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Chick?
So other than Mr. Nelson, who else? Do we have anybody else that has to come into an agreement on employment status?
Yeah, the janitorial staff was the other one and they brought them on as employees.
Okay.
Is it my understanding that the other position is going to need to be posted? Is that right? Or? Do we know that yet? Because I know it, it can't be independent contractor. That was what I understood. Is that correct?
It, it is my understanding from Stacy that, that Jim Nelson does not come under the independent contractor agreement requirements.
And that position must be an employee of the township.
Uh huh.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess we have more work to do with her on that then. We got what the next steps are.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on the independent contractors? All right, moving on. New business. First item is consider resuming regular staffing schedule at the township offices.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Nelson?
Oh, I'll make a motion to resume the normal staffing schedule as, as prior to the pandemic.
I'll support.
Want to put an as of date?
As of, as of July 1st.
As of July 1. Okay. Do you support that, Mr.? Otto? Okay. All right. There's a motion by Nelson, supported by Otto, to resume normal business operating hours as of July 1. Discussion?
Yay.
All right. Seeing no discussion. Yes, Mr.?
I would just say, everybody's welcome back to come into the township offices as of now, as far as, as far as I'm concerned. And mandatory July 1.
I will communicate that to Stacy Boyle if it's true and make sure that we have the things we need to have in place and for staff as needed. All right. Any other comments? There are none. Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Yep. Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right. Next item, make a motion that we adopt resolution 21641 road closure for the Fourth of July parade.
Support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Any discussion?
Happy to have a parade this year.
It is going to be darn nice to have a parade. Absolutely, absolutely. We, we got a little taste of the parade with the seniors parading, doing the parade from the elementary to the high school. That was, that was pretty cool. It was exciting to see. Yeah. All right. No other discussion? Anything? You call the roll?
Otto?
Yes.
Yes.
This for the road closure?
Uh, this is for the parade.
Okay. Are Otto and Zelenok abstaining?
I, I will be abstaining. I'm a member of Quanis, so I, I abstain.
I can abstain because I am the chair of the 4th of July parade.
Jennifer just has that on the resolution, so that's.
Here's my question.
Technically.
I, I feel, I mean. Can you be impartial?
They don't have to, yeah.
You know, because it's not.
Anything from this.
Right. It's financially related even for the organization, but I just typically abstain from any organization that I'm involved with that comes before the board.
Welcome to do that.
I will do that in this case.
Okay.
So I will abstain.
Okay. That's just the way Jennifer wrote it, so that's why I was clarifying with you.
As we have before in the past.
Okay. So Chick?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
So that passes five zero with two abstaining.
Pretty exciting about that. That's, that's, all right. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 21642 road closure for the 4th of July fireworks. Their support.
Right? Or is that a separate one?
This is the fireworks.
This is the fireworks, and then the banners are separate.
Thank you.
Mr. Wagner, are you available for a second? Just have a question. We, I assume we communicate to HVA that the road is closed for that during that time?
We communicated to dispatch, and we actually have HVA in the command post.
Okay. Oh, awesome. I just, I just wanted to make sure I watch them go by my building all the time, so you know, now I'm like, that's a major.
Yeah, we, that's, it's a, for the fireworks, we have Green Oak Fire, Northfield Fire, obviously, both Green Oak Fire, both Green Oak Police, Northfield Police and Fire and HVA all, we all communicate on one talk group, as well as the Sheriff's Department on the lake. So it, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a big, big undertaking that day. That's the busiest day of the year for us.
All right. Ms. Otto and Ms. Zelenok, I have a question. Is Quanis doing fundraiser parking for the fireworks? Are they urging for parking in the park or any?
No, the only thing that we are doing in the park is the dunk tank.
Yeah, okay. All right, so.
But we don't, we're not doing fundraising.
Is anybody coordinating the parking in the park, or is it a free for all?
It used to be.
I, I can chime in since I abstain, I got abstained from this, I guess, since I'm on the fireworks committee. The, the parking will be a donation, so that's what we did two years ago when the new fireworks committee came over. You, you just basically donations. We, that year, I believe we tried to get Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts to do it. This year, I think we have a new group coming in to, to do it. It'll be donations for parking to the fireworks to go to the next year. And just, just to chime in to anybody listening, this year, we are in, we're in great shape. Funds wise, we, we, since we didn't have the fireworks shoot last year, all that money transferred over, which wasn't a lot, I'll just be honest on that, but due to some great corporate sponsors, which you'll see on the banner and on the T-shirts, and we're, the, the gun raffle brought in over, just over $10,000. We're in great shape. The shoot this year should, is, is gonna cost, I believe, around $23,000. And I know some people have questions, why in the hell are you doing the shoot on the 2nd? You know, we, we booked, we booked these shoots three years in advance, and the shoot company we're using right now is, is amazing, and you, you're, you're limited by surrounding communities and everything else, but it's on a Friday night, which should be a great night, followed by the parade on the Saturday. So that, that's all I had. I'm just so happy we're doing them this year. It's such a, it's a labor of love, and every single person on, on that committee, that they dedicate so much time, and, and thanks to Wagner and everybody else, and, and the Quanis are donating so much, it's, it's just, it's something makes me so proud to be part of. That's all.
Thanks for all your hard work on that. Thanks, everybody. Ms. Chick?
Yep, so I just want to make it clear. So we have two resolutions here. One is for the banners, and one is for the road closures. Which one are we on? The road closure or the banner?
Road closure for the fireworks.
Okay, and I just wanted to say to Nate's comment about the date that I think it's great, because you got the whole weekend, you're celebrating the 4th of July, so you got the 2nd with the fireworks, the 3rd for the parade, and the 4th you celebrate with your family. It's, it'll be an awesome weekend. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Dignan, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
I, I got all abstained.
Nelson?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Zelenok?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
So six zero with Moko abstaining.
Excellent. And I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 21643 4th of July fireworks banner. And.
I'll support.
And any comments or questions or discussion on the banner?
I'll, I'll make it quick. Two years, two years ago, the new group hung it up a little low, and it didn't last a, a day until some I took it down. And I'm not gonna lie, I was out there in my pickup truck with the ladder, trying to, trying to get it back up. So if Chief Wagner's on, maybe, maybe we could wrangle the fire department to help us. I know some people on the fire, I, I don't like to ask for help too much, but for this, my ladder ain't high enough, and maybe you guys could help us put the banner up.
Yeah, just give us, give us a day's heads up that, to be able to schedule somebody to be able to take care of that.
Will do, will do. Thank you very much.
I was gonna say, we can reach out to Jay and Emerald Lamont, too, and they, I know they'd be more happy to help out.
Awesome.
They have always, at least my experience, they're very helpful. All right. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Chick?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Dignan?
Uh, yes.
Moko?
I abstain.
Nelson?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Six zero, one abstain.
All right. Next item on the agenda, I placed on the agenda, and it is consider requesting or can, of request to instruct the planning commission to work with the planners to draft ordinances in regards to rental non-homestead property registration and inspection and donation bins ordinance. As you guys know, there's a garbage bin outside of the bowling alley that is now taking up almost three parking spaces with garbage. I mean, there's donations there, but there's garbage there now, too, including a broken office chair and several other things. I've called that company numerous times and said that, and, you know, and they go, oh, we'll be out tomorrow. They're never out. They, they, they just don't come out. And Mr. Wagner?
So we, we have that same bin out at Station 2 there, and for the longest time, the company, when, when the pandemic started, that company had gone out of business. We, I actually looked and looked and looked. Finally, we got rid of all the clothes, and, and we physically removed that bin to the back of the station, and I was gonna give them a month to contact somebody, and then we were gonna scrap it. Well, a, a new company took over, and they have the stickers, and we, so they actually picked the thing up, took it back out there and put a new sticker on it, and I called them and talked to them. I said, listen, we're not gonna have this garbage piling up out here. I want this thing picked up every week. And, and they, because at that point, they were gonna do it once a month, but that wasn't gonna be enough. And so I did make progress with them. Now, that bin that you're speaking of is not on our property, so I don't know is that we have any say into, you know.
We do.
But, but they, it, it worked for me, and they were pretty cooperative, and, and I also required them to take all of the other junk that piles up next to it, so regardless of whether it's what they plan on collecting.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we can require it to be in an enclosure. We can require it to be, I mean, the planning commission can set the guidelines for it. I, I, you know, and like I said, I've called them 10 times in the last 14 days about that bin, and they've said, oh, yeah, we're gonna come out. Oh, yeah, we'll take care of it. I spoke to the vice president of the company on Monday. I said, it'll, you know, tomorrow, well, I haven't drove by yet this evening, but I guarantee you it's not empty. And, you know, I said, look, come pick it up, come pick the bin. Otherwise, we'll just give you a scrapper. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm tired of it. It's, it's ridiculous. It's awful. We've got more than one around here, and they look, they, they make our community look like a trash heap, and I'm talking, we, we just, we don't need it. I mean, I'm sorry. We have organizations in town for donations and things, and I, I just, anyway. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, so if I had my druthers, we wouldn't have any of them, but unfortunately, Supreme Court says we cannot not have them. What we can do is we could recommend a yearly license fee. We can determine the size through the planning commission ordinance. We can, other requirements, location and maintenance. So we don't have to have it on Main Street, if we wanna get it off of Main Street. So yes, we can do that. Unfortunately, we're kind of stuck with it. We just have to regulate it.
And your license, and your licensing fee can actually be quarterly.
There you go.
Where you do it, and if you don't renew their license, they can't put it back out because they didn't abide by the rules, and they can't reapply for a year. I mean, you can really, you know, I, I just, this does not benefit our local community. This benefits a corporation, albeit a nonprofit corporation. It benefits a corporation that is, is making money off of this clothing. Make, make no mistake about it. So I, I would like to make a motion that the planning commission investigate and consider adopting a ordinance for donation bins within the township.
I'll support.
Yep. Ms. Chick, and then Ms. Eleanor.
No, I was supporting.
Okay, Ms. Eleanor.
So I don't think they can adapt the ordinance, right? They can recommend the order to the board?
It comes to us. Yeah.
Yeah, because I think you said it in, they can adapt the ordinance in your motion.
Yeah, planning commission.
Recommend. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So draft and put recommendations to the board.
Yep, I fully support.
Mr. Moko?
I'd like to add that none of those garbage bins can be, I'm sorry, rag or scrap bins can be in the DDA. They need to be outside of that area, because they look like hell.
Interesting. Ms. Chick, will you take that to the planning commission with you?
I will. We'll have to check to see if we can do that, but we'll check and see for sure.
All right. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Zelenok?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
That passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item, I'll make a motion to request the planning commission investigate rental non-homestead property registration and inspection ordinance, and bring forward a recommendation to the township board.
I will support. Sorry.
Ready Dignan, supported by Chick. Discussion on the motion. Yes, Ms. Chick?
Yep, I wanted to, rental inspections will raise the standards for rental homes in the area, and it's also good for renters, and more safe. It's better and easier to deal with the blight issues if there's an ordinance and dilapidated buildings and homes, better for your neighbors, and hopefully less complaints on the opposite side of it. There, it's not a negative, but just to be aware that you're gonna need more staff to do the inspections. There's gonna be a lot of record keeping, communication with someone who's good with communication with homeowners and renters, and scheduling with landlords, and handling issues with complaints, and going to court if we have to for those that don't comply. And it has to be done fairly and consistently across the board. We can't pick and choose who we're gonna go after, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of models out there to, to structure this after that, and, and it can be a self-funding process. You don't make the fees on risk, but they, they can support the, and we certainly have enough units in, in our township to, to support it. It's usually a three-year inspection, from what I've investigated and looked at, and the reason that it's not just a rental property inspection, and the reason they've started classifying them as rental and non-homestead property, is because of the Airbnb and VRBO marketplace. So it now takes homes that are being used for Airbnb. Those are, those require those inspections as well, because you do have people coming and staying in them, and it is a safety concern, and you make sure that those specific properties are being kept up in, in, in a, in a way that is in accordance with the township ordinances, so.
And I did look at the numbers. There's, 21% of our population are renters, so we have, we have a lot of rental properties in the township.
Yep. Ms. Manley, do you have a comment, question?
Yeah, a couple. One, yeah, they are a lot of work. I mean, so we have to be prepared for that staffing-wise. And then just a thought for the planning commission, could you discuss maybe during part of that rental inspection, checking the sewer lines to see if they're dumping into the sewers? They're not supposed to be. Either they're sumps or they're washers. You know, that will give us the okay and a reason to do that, since that seems to be a lot of our issues.
Right.
Which is something to think about.
Yep.
Thought. Thanks, Kathy. That's a great thought. Yeah, I mean, as, as, as the, you know, what is inspected for? That, that's a, that's an item that should be on the checklist.
Well, Kathy, it's, doesn't, it's, Lanny has the, the rental.
Yeah.
Ordinance.
Both do.
Yeah.
Yep. And then there's a few others that are around. You know, the, the reason that this, my understanding is the reason this hasn't been addressed in the past, and it's also the same reason that ordinance enforcement hasn't been proactive, is because, at least my understanding is there wasn't a willingness of the board to, the bad guy. And, you know, I, I, I take the approach, we're here to clean this town up, raise it up, to make this place a wonderful, nice place to live, a safe place to live for those that rent and live here, and, you know, if that catches me flack in four years I'm done, so be it, but I'm gonna do my best to do what's right, and I think this is a start of something that's very important. We have a lot of complaints that come in in regards to some of the rental properties around town, and this is one of the ways that we can directly deal with that. So I, I applaud the board for its courage in, in both this and the ordinance enforcement stuff. I think it's important. And what I have heard up and down from, I gotta be honest with you, community members on Main Street and all business, all these business owners on Main Street, is thank you for, for you guys, the board, doing this. It's, it, that's, that's cool. I mean, you know, they, they know that they've gotta be held to the same standard, so it's, it's, it's really cool. But, all right, I'm done. I'm off my platform. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Chick?
Just real quickly, so we, we wanna do these ordinance. We also have a PDR ordinance that we have been directed to create at the planning commission from the board, and that was probably like two weeks ago, so we've got several things on our plate at the planning commission, but who's our planner? Who's gonna?
John Jackson is our planner at the moment.
Okay.
He is, he is filling in at this point in time. I, I imagine they're suffering from the same thing everybody else in America is suffering from right now.
Staff, yeah.
It's staffing.
Okay, thank you.
But that, that, that's where that is. So, all right. No other comments? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Otto?
Yes.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Hmm, seven zero.
Next item on the agenda is the board considering purchase of file cabinets for the building department. I will be abstaining from this and I will be abstaining from deliberations on this. Um, just to give you background so you know where it came from, um, Ms. Bird and I were in the basement. Trying to look through building files. Um, and uh she she expressed. The the frustration with not having adequate filing stuff. I happen to have these available. Um, these units run about sixteen hundred dollars each new. They're steel case. They're they're uh. You know, usually they run about five hundred bucks a piece. I just offered to get rid of them and putting it before the board. Uh, would one of you mind, Ms. Manley, would you mind facilitating this agenda item for me? Because I'm just gonna.
Um, yes, I don't have it printed. I would have to find it. Does anybody have it printed?
Ms. Zelenak, would you mind?
Yep, so it's the request to purchase up to nine file cabinets for the use by the building department. I also think the zoning administrator. Would be interested in at least one of them. The amount is eighteen hundred dollars and um. So I also talked to Mary Bird and she was indicating she needed five potentially. So I don't know if um. The seller would be just interested in selling those five of them?
Yeah, whatever. I it it they're two hundred dollars a piece. If they want five, that's fine. If they end up wanting eight, that nine, that's fine. I.
Okay. Alright, why don't we um can we make a motion that we would purchase nine up to. Up to nine for eighteen hundred dollars and if we only needed five, then we would only purchase five. Of them.
I'll support.
Okay. And any discussion?
I just wanted to say that um that is excellent price, number one. Um, I went, was that when I was looking for file cabinets for the office that I was working in. Um, they're they're very nice. The steel case is very nice and much more. Uh, easily used and accessible than the regular standard file cabinet drawers that we have, so. It's a good, it's a good purchase and a good uh option for the office.
Uh, um, I have a question for Mr. Dignan. Um, do they have keys?
Well, every single one of them has keys.
Does anybody else have any other comments? Mr. Moko?
I I just want to say we recently, two years ago, had to purchase a bunch of cabinets. Steel case is really nice, made in USA. And uh the price Ken's selling them for is is excellent. You can. Check around. You're not gonna get a match set like this for anywhere near that price. And uh if anybody's been in the basement. God knows we need him, so. That's all I support.
I would just like to say that I believe um Miss Bird has talked to uh Mr. Willis and they would be offering, they would offer to help to bring them over to. I'm not sure where they are, Mr. Dignan, but from the location to the location that we need them at the public safety building. So I thank Mr. Willis for volunteering to do that as well. Any other comments? Okay, hearing done. Um, Ms. Manley, would you call the roll?
Yep. Uh, Chick?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Um, Dignan? Manley, yes. Moko?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
That passes six zero.
Great. I I do know they were talking about putting some of the older file cabinets downstairs and using these in the office and. I don't know. Mr. Willis, I'll get with and and coordinate certainly getting them over there, so. Yep. Alright, next item is consider resuming in-person meetings for the Board of Trustees. So I spoke to. Uh, Mr. Fink in regards to this. Mr. Fink, uh, let's see, is he on? He's not on. Um, did express his concern about hybrid meetings until such time that. Uh, the, you know, a full system is put in place. Uh, I have yet to be able to find an AV company that is able to do that. Uh, certainly want to, uh, but. So this item is on the agenda for consideration. Mr. Nelson?
Um, I I just wanted to make a motion to resume in-person meetings as uh as before the pandemic effective July first.
Okay.
Support.
Motion by Nelson, supported by Otto. Uh, we would. And I would anticipate we would continue live streaming as we always have. Um, but uh and and uh work towards a hybrid type system. Uh, as as we can, but uh I'm gonna, I'm gonna. See to my uh legal counsel's advice on on that one, but uh Ms. Chick, go ahead.
So my only concern is that currently we're at fifty percent capacity indoors. Um, are we expecting or do we know for sure that as of July one, all those restrictions will be lifted?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Manley.
Can we add to that as long as the restrictions are lifted?
We can add that, yeah. A- as long as the current uh is that myosha, as long as the current myosha guidelines are 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 met.
Right. I will probably bring a resolution to the next meeting to or a a motion to rescind the resolution that. Put us into this. We had a resolution at the board level to have these meetings this way. So we'll need to rescind that resolution at the end of June, so I will bring that motion if this passes. I will bring that to the board next meeting, so. Alright, is there any other discussion? Ms. Zelenak, go ahead, please.
So we are sure insured or we are assured that. There is no capacity limit on the number of people that can be indoors. So in the past, the reason we haven't done this is because there was a capacity limit, so that is being lifted. I'm not. So is there, is that a definite?
Yes, the all the, all the restrictions are lifted effective July first. Um, technically speaking, even right now, they are if you're considered fully vaccinated, but businesses. Uh, but I I thi- I think myosha makes it so you actually have to prove your record or something like that in order to be able to make that right now. As that was effective June first, that will no longer be effective July first.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So even if you're unvaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask as of July first.
Correct.
Alright, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing done, Ms. Manley, we call the roll.
Yep, Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Moko?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
That passes seven zero.
Well, guys, we did it.
Everybody. Alright, moving on trustee liaison reports. Uh, I'll start with the supervisor report. So um, a couple of things uh going on as you may see on Main Street. Uh, both the Bobberdown site and the um Planted site. Uh, the the two uh dispensaries, they are rapidly finishing up the exteriors of their buildings. And interiors, if you haven't been downtown, um Planted, which is the Green Guys group, has um. They're putting new brick on the fascia of the building. Looks, it looks really nice. They put new windows in the. Uh, it 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 looks really good. The um. Uh, and then uh down at the other end, uh, like I said, the uh. Market. They they're, you know, rapidly progressing as well. So uh. Once, once these guys are done and have met all their obligations in the township, uh then grants them their license. Uh, they then have to start this process with the state. And uh the state has, I think, two inspectors or something. It's very, very few inspectors statewide. And it's taking them thirty sixty days before they're able to get the state license, so. Um, you know, we appreciate uh they've both been very engaged to to. Uh, and excited about looking forward to sharing their revenue uh with organizations in the community. So uh that that's a, that's a great thing. Uh, did get a couple uh supervisor calls this week. Um, one was in regards to uh. A droning drilling sound down in the southeast corner of the township. Uh, he was very upset. It went on all. Friday night, all day Saturday and uh called me back about an hour later and said it was the zikatus. So. Which which I I I appreciated so much he called back because I was racked in my brain going, what in the world could be down there? You know, Washington all sanding gravels down there. But I couldn't believe it, but that, so uh the other call was a little more uh. Frustrating and uh uh an individual had patronized a gas station in the center of our town. And was uh treated very, very poorly. Um, I referred this individual over to the. Public Safety Director and um I do know that the Police Department had a conversation. Is that correct, Mr. Wagner?
That is correct. Right after I talked to you, Ken, we we did contact her and had a long conversation with her and. And offered to, you know, take a formal police report and do an investigation into it and file a complaint if we could. Um, but she was not interested. She was more interested in making sure that we were aware of what was going on. And so it's duly duly noted.
She bought, she 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 basically went to the counter with a with a bottle of water, a bottle of pop and an ice bag and was told it would be eighteen dollars. Or something to that effect. She questioned him. Uh, you know. He asked her if she he was questioning her or that she was questioning him. They said, well, just give me eight dollars. And when she said that she just wanted her money back and didn't want anything at all, um, he then asked her. Uh, if she was Chinese. What are you, Chinese? That's that's the way he presented. And uh she's a Korean American. Um, she she was very upset about it. She was here visiting our community for a traveling baseball tournament. Happening over at the Jennings Road Athletic Complex. Um, you know, her and I had a very good conversation. Made her work, we did understand that there are issues that are going on there. Um, and uh, you know. Uh, on a positive note, I did ask her if she went south to a gas station at six mile and she said she did. And she was very pleased with her experience there. She said it was very clean, very professional. The people there were were a delight to work with. And she went back and told everybody at the athletic field to go down there. So, you know, uh, I said, well, our our residents that work there. Greatly appreciate it. I said, I I I know that uh, uh, you know, that. You know, it's it's operated very well down there in in person. So uh we do have issues that are not just uh zoning compliance related. At that location, so. Um, if if it weren't so. Um, if it weren't such a bad situation, I wouldn't call it out here, but it, you know, people need to be aware. That's what's going on. And and we need to be very cognizant of it. We are in a uh. Uh, we're still in a zoning dis- uh issue with them. Uh, we did, they did get fined for their signs that are covering every single inch of every single window. Um, and uh, the zoning uh uh ordinance enforcement officer. Did uh discuss with them the outside storage and the garbage around the garbage. All they did was pay the fine and. Expected it to just go away. Well, I talked to Officer King today and they are in the process of issuing. Their second stage fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, after that fine, if they don't come within compliance. This issue will be referred over to Mariah Fink for uh legal action. So, um, you know, that that is the next step in the process. Uh, you know. But I just wanted to give you guys an update. That's kind of what's, you know, men at the forefront of things that, you know, there's a few other uh. Minor things, the property up at Eight Mile, uh, the old um. Um, LaFave's property is on the market now. It does have an active broker that's trying to broker the property. Um, so they're they're working at that. Uh. There is a the the parcel property that's behind Whitmore Lake Auto Parts or behind the uh Advanced Auto Parts. It's got the pools on it, the two pools. That's for sale. That's that's on the market now. Um, there's uh, what was the other prop? There is another. Just got an email on it. Yes, Mr. Wagner?
Waste management on territorial? Is that what you're thinking of?
There you go. Yeah, the the waste managed where where uh advanced used to be. Uh, next to the, next to the dog training school, right? Uh, that property has been vacated and is up for sale as well. So um that that's a, I believe, uh, ten, twenty thousand square feet, I think, two ten thousand square foot buildings. Is that?
Yeah, um, just I I'm gonna keep an eye on that. I drove back there after you and I had that discussion today and there's still some activity going on in there. And I'm not exactly sure what it is, but uh and they also have a very large outdoor fuel storage. And I'm not sure it has the containment that it's supposed to have, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be kind of paying attention to that, so.
Okay, and 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 please, yeah, yeah, I know you and and Officer King are speaking. I know she mentioned that she talked to you if there was stuff that she needed to get involved with too, vice versa. Ms. Chick?
Yep, I would like to ask the supervisor. Um, have we uh had any discussions or contacted Livonia Builders? Uh, regarding the new boundary map?
We did. Um, I'm I'm glad you brought that up and uh he came back and said. How much do you want for the property?
Okay.
So um I being the former used car sales guy that I once was in my life, then. Uh, no, you give the first number. We're not giving the first number. So we're gonna have to have that discussion with him. Um, or, you know, uh, you know, uh. We'll see. Uh, you know, he kind of made it pretty straightforward. He said, uh, a while back. If I don't, if I don't build there, we will have absolutely no problem finding someone that would be interested in it. And I'm interested in doing it, so. Ms. Otto? Uh, you're muted, Ms. Otto.
Sorry, I muted myself because a train was going by. Um. Uh, it was my understanding that the board did have a price on it at one time at fifty to uh fifty thousand dollars an acre.
That was the appraisal. That was.
He and he gave us a uh an amount of seven hundred and forty-nine thousand for uh fifteen acres.
Correct, but that also included. There there was, there was a long laundry list of asterisks after that seven fifty. Because that seven fifty included him developing a beach front and him doing other things on the park property.
Yeah.
He's not doing that. He's not developing a beach.
No, we and we told him he he could bid to do the work on the park property, but we weren't gonna let him do the park property, so.
Right, but 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 his offer of seven fifty included a guarantee that that money would go towards that.
Nope, no guarantee, sorry.
Well, that was the offer.
Yeah, that was the offer then. So what I'm trying to say is that there. There is a really truly a price out there for that proper effort per acre.
There is not.
I understand the appraisal price.
Yeah, that appraisal price is.
And I understand his seven fifty per fourteen acres, but. He can come up with something.
I agree. I agree.
Price out there. Price out there and and it's between that.
Yeah, oh, I I I agree. I mean, you know. At fifteen acres or fourteen acres, I mean, that was what fifty thousand an acre, right? You know. Yeah, and. You know, unless there's a a substantial community benefit, I don't.
Thousand an acre, so the price is out there. He he did the price. Why should it change now that it's at eleven? And we're doing the park.
Well, be, you know, I don't know. I'm not I'm not I'm not speculating that. I'm gonna let him figure that out and come to us with a number. But, I mean.
Should we put a force out?
Um, we have to do something. I mean, we shouldn't be sitting on this.
Not now.
Well, not now. We need to be more proactive. Give him a timeline.
I'm not in a hurry to sell the property myself until we know how much the park's gonna cost.
Why?
Why Frank?
Know what the price of the price of the parks gonna cost.
Do you? How much is the park gonna cost?
You you have it in the in the in the master plan of some of the costs, so you have how much it's gonna cost.
The beach was about five hundred thousand.
Number one, you don't know if if Eagle will even let you put in a beach.
Right.
I'm getting, yeah, I I well, I I think there's still too many unknowns to really know what the value that property is not going down.
No.
And everything we do on that property is gonna make the value of that property go up. Everything we put on the park is gonna value that property go up. So I'm not me as one board member, I'm not in a real hurry to offload that property. Because it's not really to our, you know, immediate benefit to offload it.
So when does taxes have to be? When do taxes kick in? Because it does kick in after a certain number of years.
We're not paying taxes on that property.
No.
It's classified as a park. As long as it's available and classified as a park and public purpose, there aren't taxes on it.
But we were paying taxes about two thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, so Lenore, we are going to be dealing a portion of that only for a park.
Yeah, when you when 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 that happens, then yeah, you'll start paying taxes, so.
That's October first.
Mr. Dignan has it right. Don't, you know, don't be in a hurry to get, you know, do do those mechanisms because, yeah, you'll start paying taxes on it. And why would you want to do that?
We have to. We have the DNR grant. You have to have it done by October first.
What do you have to have done? That you have to tell them you're only going to use ten acres or not?
Yes, you have to have a new deed. They're requiring it as part of the grant.
Well, then maybe we don't want the grant. Let's see what.
No, 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 we've no. Let's not go back over this again. Establish what the boundaries are. Let's move forward.
Builders as a agenda item so that we can just move forward, so we can, you know, move forward on items as opposed to.
Right.
Gabbing on.
I think that's what you need to do is start moving forward on items instead of. And kicking the can down the road.
You'd like to put forth one more, or you can. Ms. Manley?
So so Jackie, once we split it off, does the DNR say what we have to do with that other park? Can it stay empty? Or does it? Do they say what we have to do with it?
They don't care what you do with the other.
So it can stay as vacant land. It can stay as a park and we don't have.
Oh, yeah.
We're not paying taxes on it if it stays in in community benefit recreation and.
Right.
And right now there's a trail on it, so as long as the trail's.
That the park that belongs to the park, they did it. They want it separated.
Okay.
So it is not part of the twenty three acres anymore. It'll be part of the eleven point three acres.
I agree. We make this an agenda item.
Yeah, we should, you know, it's just like a gab session right now.
Okay, so put it on the agenda.
All right, I don't have anything else. Next site is Treasuries Report. Ms. Alna?
Treasury Report, yes, just to let everybody know the taxes are going to the printer on June seventeenth. So we need to have the newsletter. And that's about it. Working our taxes, so.
Miss Otto?
So I seen on here on your report of the delinquent personal property tax.
Yes.
How much do we have? How many? How much do we have in collections?
I'd have to. I just actually ran the report. I don't have it handy. I would say, I don't know. I just ran it. I don't have it available.
And do we have a report on the aging of the delinquent property tax?
Yes, we do.
Okay, because I know at one time Kathy Braun used to provide that to us.
Okay.
The board, is that something that the board can have?
If you'd like it, you can have it. Would you like to go collect? Me too?
And that's not what I'm asking. I'm just saying because in prior years it was never collected.
We try to get it collected. I need to sit down with Mr. Fink because there's we're gonna have to go to court with. And trying to get people to pay is very difficult and I'm, you know, gonna have to go take equipment. That will be fun.
Need to follow through on it and get it collected.
Right.
This happened for years prior to Janet and I coming on the board that it was never collected. And then.
There is no doubt, you know, you're gonna we're gonna have to.
I know there were a few personal property tax bills that got mailed to my building here that are kind of our places that are completely defunct and gone, but I don't know. Yeah, I mean, that's the problem is they just.
They get up and leave and then we we will have to take them off the rolls.
Right. I mean, they're not a lot. I mean, they were small amounts, but.
Right. We have a couple that are a lot. I mean, one was Ann Arbor Roofing and they just left, so.
So so that's a question. So if if we're making. Just decisions about who we're gonna go after and who we're not gonna go after, how much are we losing? But from those people that aren't being or that we're not collecting from.
It's all bad debt. We need to go after. I don't want to say go. If you're not paying your prop, death and taxes, two facts of life. Yeah.
This is personal delinquent property taxes. Yes, and if the business goes defunct, it becomes very difficult to collect on them.
But we try, right?
Yeah, we try.
You need to go after unless they have an exemption. I mean, that's that's a fact. Every single person in this township's. There's no, that's not, we're all equal in that in that aspect. We all got.
Yeah, and unfortunately, people didn't file for the exemption. Many of them could have qualified for it and they didn't file it.
Now, the problem is. When the company leaves township, they owe twenty dollars. Do we spend?
We're we have if we have a policy where we have a limit that we write off or are we just writing off whatever?
We haven't written off anything yet.
Okay.
Isn't there a isn't there a certain amount of time that it stays in delinquency? After re five years?
Yes.
And then you have to write it off, and that's what happened to us.
Correct.
Back in two thousand twelve, I think it was.
Yep, probably. There's things that weren't collected in two twelve, two thirteen, two fourteen, two fifteen, and we do the. And, you know, one of them right now is the bowling alley. So that's gonna be a fun one to set down.
Yeah, that's gonna be a tough one. I mean.
I I just want to say it's our job to to.
Understand.
Take care of it. We have to. I mean.
I put it out in all my letters. Everybody has to pay. It's our job to collect it and my job is you are correct.
And if if there's a way that 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 they can be helped through, you know, right now, especially with COVID, people can. Do forbearance and all that other stuff. You know, there's there's. I'm not trying to sound like the bad guy, but there's programs out there to help everybody. But we, you know, to function as a township, we we are picking and choosing by saying, ah, we're not gonna go after people who don't pay. You know, that's.
Mr. Moko, we did not say.
I know you didn't, Lenore. I'm just putting it out there. So anyways, I I would love a report of the delinquencies and everybody else and, you know. And and let's let's find a way to work together and get it done.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is, you know, as you know, the township gets a very small part of it, but we still have to collect. So when you see a, you know, a twenty five thousand delinquency bill. It does. That means probably we're gonna get maybe a thousand dollars. I'll calculate how much the township gets out of it.
Right, so when it's a twenty five dollar bill.
That's correct.
It means a dollar.
Good, very well. So I will put that on my report as well as how much the township will receive.
All right. Clerk's report, Ms. Manley?
Yeah, the big thing is for the August election, we're combining precincts two and three, just more for staffing issues. And because it's normally a low turnout, so everyone will be voting at the middle school this year. Absentee ballots will be available after June nineteenth. I don't know exactly what day we'll have those. But after that weekend, we'll be getting absentee ballots ready to go. That's really it. Late fees are added to the sewer bills. That's it. It's getting ready for August.
All right, and Ms. Chick, Planning Commissioner report?
Yep, May fifth, we discussed the electronic meeting procedures and it looks like we're gonna have to do that again since we're changing things up. And then we received the zoning administrators quarterly report on January first through May thirty first. And we also discussed the upcoming joint training session as a workshop. And then on May nineteenth, we had the joint training session with the PC and the ZBA and any interested board members. There were six. Planning Commission members, two ZBA members and two board reps for the PC and the ZBA were included in those numbers. And the sessions covered a multitude of items, including planning and zoning essentials, review procedures. The ZBA managing risk, public participation, decision making, ethics. It was very helpful. And provided essential information and I want to thank the planner for, actually, Vidya, I think it was, it sent it out to everybody's mailbox. It's if you didn't read it, read it. There's a lot of good information in there and it makes it a little more clear exactly what kind of. Regular things we have to work under, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Next, ZBA report?
Training session, that was it. I believe there was one other ZBA member there and. That was it. Nothing to report.
Parks and Recs.
So for Parks and Rec, a couple of things, DNR trust grant submission, we did have to. Add some additional information. We were notified on May fourteenth and it was due to the DNR by May fifteenth. The other thing, like I said earlier, we do have to do a new deed and I have talked to Mr. Fink. It's not gonna be that hard to do and that needs to be completed well before October first. To be submitted to DNR by October first. Community Park. RFP, we have had several meetings. We have gone through scoring, interviewing and references. We have come up with the three that we are top three. We are presenting it to the Parks and Rec Board. I do have, we are having an early board meeting, so I do have to let. Jennifer's not gonna be in tomorrow, is she? She won't be in it Thursday. Don't we have to notification eighteen hours ahead of time for a, is that? Is it only for a board meeting or can we have a meeting for the Parks and Rec? On Thursday, because that's when we were gonna meet this week.
Think it's everything.
Yeah, we get the notification out. Just just talk to Stacy.
Okay, I'll call her tomorrow morning. Okay, and then. So we're going and we have to have everything done. And given over to Jennifer by the fifteenth, so she'll have it prepared for the packet. And by that date, we are letting all nine know who the final picks are. So we are hoping on June twenty second on that agenda. That they will be board presentations by the three.
When did you say that was my?
We have to give it to Jennifer by June fifteenth for the June twenty second agenda.
Okay, all right.
And then the last thing I wanted to bring to everybody's attention is the. Park and Rec did order plantings for the lakefront. I think they're they're already starting to create some of the beds on the lakefront. To put some of the perennial plantings there. I recommended that they started after the Fourth of July event. But. They were getting the flowers, the plantings this week, so they couldn't hold them off for a whole month. So they are putting them in. These beds will only be temporary until the park has more final design. But they figured they'd like to at least make the front part of the lake look inviting.
Great. I had a quick question and. If you're gonna need a new deed, you're gonna have to have a survey. Because they're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to draw up new legal descriptions in order to get a deed.
Uh, Mr. Fink already addressed that with me.
Okay. Okay, because he just addressed that with us this morning. Not on that property specifically, but on township owned property.
Okay, so I'll reach out to him.
Okay, Ms. Chick?
So Jackie, on the plantings, are they on the lakefront or on the the sides of the lake? Because my understanding was in order, if you do any kind of amending or planting along the lakefront area, the Eagle or DNR has to be. Notified and and approve the plans. Are they raised beds or are they going in the ground and are they along?
Going in the ground.
Are they going along the shore or along the sides?
The sides in the back and I didn't, they, I don't think they're going in the front.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, anything else for Parks and Rec? Ms. Alna, would you like to, do you have anything on land preservation?
Yes, I just want to say our hike was really successful. It was a lot of fun. I learned a lot as well. We are going to try to plan a hike quarterly and so stay tuned.
Anybody have any questions? Guards still PC? All right, moving on. I don't have any announcements. Petitions and communications from the public. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board at this time. Please do so by raising your hand. The no member of the public raising their hand will move on to or member comments. And clarification, anybody have any comments this evening? Mr. Nelson and then Ms. Chick?
I just wanted to say I'm happy we're going back to in-person meetings. I'm kind of looking forward to attending my first in-person meeting with you all in person. Actually, being able to discuss instead of being in front of a screen the whole time. It's kind of good. We're moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Ms. Chick?
Yes, I wanted to thank Ms. Christian for submitting that information on the twenty one day equity challenge. It's a great idea and I also want to say it's very embarrassing, I think, for someone from out of town. Having such a bad experience at the gas station there downtown. And in fact, I'm actually working on a diversity, equity and inclusion statement to bring to the board for the us to adopt if they so choose to do. for the us to adopt if they so choose to do that. And I do have a question for Mister Wagner, um, is there been any kind of action on that area next to the church downtown and by Harbor Cove, uh, there've been, I'm getting complaints from people saying that there's trash there all the time, and people are smoking and doing all kinds of stuff there that shouldn't be going on, and from several people.
So, I, and I think Mister Dignan can attest to this, it's become way more complicated than I ever realized it would be. Um, I, and I have all three, I think, uh, interests, uh, on board, but uh, so the apartment complex is interested in fencing it off. I'm not so, a- and I think the, the little apartments that have um, they have an easement there, and it's, it's on their deed that they have that easement. But then it even goes on to say that, and others have an easement onto that property just north of the church property, so I did notice after I got back from vacation that somebody had put up another little burlap fence that doesn't look very good. So I, and and I'm not sure I wanna put myself or the township in a liability situation that I'm determining what should be done and what shouldn't, because truthfully, it's a civil, it's a civil land issue that that I'm trying to help, um, officiate. But, uh, I I was working on it, and then I got stalled with some other things, and then I was gone all last week, so I'll try to get back on to it, uh, unfortunately, the answer is no, I have not made any progress, other than I have talked to all three uh, landowners that I know that have interest in it, and they all agree that they don't want, um, the issues going on that we have going on, so. And I think it's really gonna come down to the church making a decision to try to, uh, take some corrective action, even if it's, even if it's, even if I can just get them to put signs up saying no trespassing. Then we, uh, you know, from the police side of things, we can en- enforce that. But we can't just enforce a trespass order if the landowner isn't interested in it, so. Uh, while the church isn't interested in closing their parking lot, they don't really want people down on the beach, so um, I gotta get back with the pastor there and and kind of recommend some signage that you know, they want people coming into the parking lot and viewing the lake or having their lunch, and a lot of people do that, a lot of people will pull into there and eat their lunch and look at the lake, and including some of my officers. Um, so, you know, they're good with that, but they're, they don't really want, um, you know, people parking there and then taking their lawn chairs around on the other side of the fence, so we just need to get that fence enclosed so that people can't walk down through there. Or if they're not willing to do that, and I think the the apartment complex is willing to foot the bill for the fence. But at that time, when I talked to them, I thought that fence was gonna be on the apartment complex uh, property, and I don't believe that to be the case anymore, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, sorry, it's just way more complicated than I realized it was.
Yeah, it's, it's that darn, uh, deed, deed, uh, access that's there, and the other, I I believe cause I, as I stated before, gee, I I was looking at buying those properties. And I believe that the properties that were included in that deeded access was that property and the the Grove that became Harbor Cove Apartments.
Okay.
That Grove there was, I mean, people would camp there, they, it was a camping site. You'd have trailers and they would come and and camp, and and then they would have access, and if if this is going way back, but where the gazebo is used to be the gas station for the boat, for the boats on the lake, and and I think that that Grove used to have that access there, and it was deeded, and when they built the log cabins next to it, that property was part of it. So I don't think there's any other properties, I mean, we, I kind of searched and looked through several documents. And there doesn't seem to be any other deeds that I was able to find that are, where it's deeded access. You know, I thought maybe the building connects to it or something.
What I'd really like to see is the deed of the actual church and to see what um, because the deed talks about the church's property. Um, you know, the easement, the access is, the church's property is named as the basically the property line, so, um, but if I looked, the I would think that same information would be on the church's deed as well, so.
Might have a copy of that. But anyway, yeah, that's, that's a, that's a tough situation. But we do have to get a, get a handle on it.
Yeah.
You know, private property, that's a.
Yeah, it doesn't look good for downtown, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I I personally witnessed a fistfight in the church parking lot last summer, so, you know. Obviously, it was alcohol.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any comments, Ms. Otto?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, give everybody an update on the parade. Uh, we do have A T R Motorsports from Fowlerville, uh, participating in our parade. They will be providing the monster truck. Uh, I did get word two days ago that we may have a little tiger um, showing up in our parade. Uh, so we, you may be having Paws join our parade this year again. Uh, but I will know more in the next two weeks. Uh, we do have Woody Bud Light Year and a, uh, a a fire uh, fighter Dalmatian that will be in our parade this year. And our grand marshal will be, um, Chief Wagner.
Yay.
Excellent.
I do need, um, volunteers, uh, we need clowns, and we need people to fit into some of our um, our uh, cartoon, uh, character costumes. And then we also need, um, I need some people to help with traffic um, along the the parade route. And if you need more information, just reach out to me.
All right. I have been recruited to sit in the dunk tank, so everybody out there that's ever wanted to dunk me, you're, you'll have that opportunity. I encourage you to buy lots of chances, encourage you to try to dunk me multiple times. I'll taunt you a little bit, no. No, but no, I think it's great, I think it's awesome, all that's awesome, just can't wait. All right, Mister Moko?
I'll make it quick, and I wanna thank, uh, uh, Jackie and the Quannys for everything this year. Working with the fireworks, it's great to be working together. Um, it it just makes everything so much easier instead of having two separate groups doing the same thing, and uh, anybody who's looking to volunteer, um, you know, as far as anything, if you have a group that wants to volunteer for parking, whether it's, uh, you know, Parks and Rec, land preservation, I I don't care. Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, anybody that wants to help volunteer. Um, we're a really small group that puts this on, so, uh, if anybody's, we need help with, uh, we're gonna have a grill going, uh, for hot dogs and hamburgers, I believe. Um, so, any- anybody reach out to me, look me up through, uh, the township, or, um, or Facebook or whatever, I don't check Facebook nearly as much as the township, so, uh, thanks a lot, and, uh, yep, see you in two weeks.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else? Ms. Allenock, Ms. Manley? Anything? No?
Good, thanks.
All right, uh, in that case, I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-eight. Is there support?
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Folks, have a good night, thank you very much.
Have a good night.